Good morning. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Weber County Commission meeting dated today, Tuesday, the 27th of August, and it's a few minutes after 10:00. So we welcome you here today. It's good to have you all here. Our invocation this morning will be offered by Matt Wilson, our pledge of allegiance by Bryce Taylor, and the thought of the day will be Commissioner Forre. So Matt, you're up today. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you doing this.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're thankful for this day and for the opportunity to be here. We're grateful for this great county that we're here to be a part of and grateful for the opportunity to be here again in commission meeting. And we ask you to please bless us all and please bless all those who serve this great country. I can thank you for the leadership and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Is Bryce here?
I don't see him.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Oh, if you'll repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Forre, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my thoughts go back a little bit to yesterday with our golf tournament. And not necessarily because of the golf, even though that was a great day and a gorgeous course. And we had a good representation of our business and industry leaders and government officials out at the golf course. I think it was a very good event for a number of reasons. But the number one reason that we hold that golf tournament is to raise funds for some nonprofits that need and deserve that money. And so my thought really goes about what we find very prevalent in Weber County and the state of Utah. And I've been told before that the state of Utah is the most giving state in the country. And I believe that. The reason that we enjoy a lot of things we do in the county and the state is because we have such a giving attitude. And I think yesterday was a good example of that, where we had businesses, industry come together to give to those nonprofits that need and deserve our help. So one of my favorite quotes from Jim Rohn goes as follows, "Only by giving are you able to receive more than you already have." I think that's a good example for all of us to live by. So that's my thought, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Forre. We appreciate that. Wonderful thought today. All right, we're now to the point in our meeting where we accept public comments. There are those who've come to talk to us today other than agenda itemed. If you're on the agenda, don't worry about coming up because we'll get to you. But if there's others, we'd like to have you here. See nobody? So we'll move on to the next items. Item G, action items. First item, or not G, consent items, I'm sorry. I said G and checked F. Consent items, request for approval of warrants 1961 through 1980 and 442155 through 442503 in the amount of $2,359,649.2. Second item is request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of, whoa.
That's not right.
That's $7 million on that list. And we went through the warrants this morning. They were about $70,000.
Mr. Chair, they obtained that from an old version of the report that hadn't been updated. The correct amount is $109,000.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. $109,000. I was gonna say, I picked that right up because we went through those just before we came here. All right. Consent item number three is request for approval of minutes from the August 20th meeting. Number four is request for the Weber Morgan Health Department to approve, for approval, to surplus some baby scales in a tablet. And number five is request Weaver Morgan Health Department to approve, to surplus a 2003 white Ford Explorer. Commissioners, any questions on that?
Good catch on item number two.
Yeah, it's a little different.
No questions?
No.
Good.
I'm open for a motion.
Want to do that or you want to talk to Ricky?
Oh, Ricky, why don't you go ahead and go through this? I always forget to go to you.
That's okay. And for the purchase orders, the exact total is $109,355.28. And that relates to nine purchase orders. Two-thirds of that amount are $70,000 is for the library and that's for e-media. It's an open order for, to purchase e-media. Seventeen percent or $18,000 is for homeland security. And that is for the hazmat rebuild. Ten percent or $11,000 for the health department, which will go to purchase computers. We issued 367 checks this week for $2.4 million. One-fourth of that amount or $541,000 is for the transfer station. And that's almost exclusively disposal fees. Nine percent or $218,000 is the monthly payment to the paramedic fund. Eight percent or $190,000 is the monthly payment to Weber Human Services. Six percent or $150,000 is for Public Defender. And that's for monthly services, but it also includes about $30,000 related to capital appeals for capital cases. And five percent or $124,000 relates to the jail. And that purchased food, utilities, medical services, as well as building maintenance.
Very good. Now, Commissioners, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we accept the items as presented. That correction on item F2 is printed to our consent items.
Second.
I have a motion as second to that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay, we'll go to item G, action items. Item number one is request for consideration and action on a request to amend a conditional use permit for the Terraki Village PRUD. Mr. Steve Burton.
Hi, Commissioners.
Aye, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have received a request to amend a conditional use permit. So back in 2017, the applicant Brad Blanch received a conditional use permit to be able to start plating what we call a planned residential unit development located at approximately 900 South and 4,700 West. What has happened since the developer has started to plat, they realized that they needed to make a few changes to this. The main change is they are required to hook up to secondary water. They're required to hook up to Hooper irrigation. Or they're required to create their own secondary system. So this request is to be able to create their own secondary system. What we're looking at is taking some of the open space that was originally designated as kind of a common area for people in the development to enjoy, kind of like an agricultural parcel for agritourism as well. The proposal is to take an acre of that and to make it into a pond for secondary, to be able to have this new secondary system so that it doesn't have to connect into Hooper irrigation. We took this to the planning commission as the procedure is. And the planning commission, as I've outlined in the staff report, made a recommendation to approve of these changes, but they would not like this pond to be considered open space. Because of that, if it's not being considered open space, that actually takes away a little bit of the density that was originally approved as part of this development. And so if you decide to go forward with the planning commission's recommendation, we as staff would recommend that you look at taking away some of the density, at least one lot is what we've recommended, because if it's not open space, then there shouldn't be as much bonus density granted, if that makes sense. Originally, before we took this to the planning commission, we as staff recommended that they do call this open space and that they don't mess, or not mess with, but that they don't alter the density, I should say. But they chose not to do that. And so that's the recommendation from the planning commission, if you'd like to do that. Or the other option for approval would be to just approve it as staff originally recommended and leave it considered open space and leave the number of lots there. So I'll answer any questions.
Was, Steve, was there something in statute that made them want this to be part of the plan instead of the open spaces? In other words, this gentleman's gonna lose density here by doing this. Is there something behind it? Is there something in code that says it has to be part of the density and not the open space?
There's not, no. The code, the code does not, for a PRUD, the code does not say that you cannot have a secondary water pond as part of your open space.
Okay, then, were you at the meeting?
I was.
Was there some reason that they cited this? I mean, did it not conform? Or was it out of bounds? Or was it, is there a reason they wanted to take a lot to do this?
So when it comes to PRUDs and granting opens, granting bonus density, the planning commission and the county commission does have some discretion as far as granting bonus density. And so there isn't necessarily something in statute that they cited, other than they just didn't feel that it was, that it should be considered open space because you can't, maybe because you can't walk on it. There was some discussion of it being some kind of a visual open space amenity, but ultimately, they decided to not call this open space. Like I said, just going back to the discretion that they have as the planning commission in making that recommendation to you.
Commissioners, Commissioner Forre?
So just so I'm clear, so staff recommendation originally was to include the pond as open space?
Yes.
And then the planning commission came back and said, "We don't necessarily like that. We prefer to have that not counted as open space."
Correct.
Okay, I get it.
So, may I?
Mr. Chair, you said code said that it cannot have open space as secondary water. That's why I was, as I was listening, I wrote that down. Did I misunderstand that?
No. Yes, sorry. Code, code does not specifically state in the PRUD code that open, that open space cannot be a secondary water pond. It does not say that. Now, in the cluster subdivision ordinance, I believe there may be something in there, but not, not currently in the PRUD ordinance.
You also said in your presentation that they had to connect to Hooper irrigation. Or do they have to connect to a secondary water?
They are required as part of their subdivision to either, A, connect to Hooper irrigation to provide secondary water, or B, create their own water district.
Does it specify a particular water district? Or does it just say secondary water?
The ordinance says, the ordinances say secondary water.
Thank you.
But where, where we've received a will serve letter, I believe will serve for culinary water stated something along the lines of needing to connect to Hooper irrigation. Those are, those are the two options that we've looked at and that have been brought up as the development's gone forward.
Questions I have.
And the applicant is here. I'm guessing he'd like to be heard. I would just mention that. Do you have any other questions for me?
I don't see any.
No.
Very good. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Mr. Blanch, welcome here today.
So state name and address.
Yes, please.
Brad Blanch, 736 South, 4,700 West, West Weber. I think that Steve outlined the request very well. Although the requirement from Tater West Weber Water doesn't say anything about a requirement for connection to a secondary water district. I have been in regular contact with Tater West Weber Water as well as Hooper irrigation. The plan that we have is to stub the secondary water design into 900 South for the event in the future when a secondary water provider, whomever that may be, is in the area, that they would be able to take over the system and connect to it. The two primary reasons why we want to do our own pond at this point is, one, cost that I think you all know are approaching a million dollars to pull their line from about a mile and a half away. And then second is the requirement to utilize Hooper shares, their requirement, because they're not used to having these smaller lots, would take significantly more water than what is actually required for the yards and the open space. So our proposal is simply to have a pond on site, to build our own system until into the future Hooper irrigation or another district is there. Real quickly, Steve, I'm not sure if you're coming back up to address this or not. There was a second item that was addressed at the Western Weber Planning Commission, and that was front yard setbacks. For the larger Terraki Farm project, front yard setbacks are approved to be 20 feet instead of 30. There was a proposal that we made to have the front yard setbacks for the village be the same as that, primarily because, couple reasons. One, the roads are narrower than typically, 60 feet, they're 50 feet approved right of ways. And then also, it does help on the amount of water that we would use for ponds. We really like the idea that, last time I was before you, that the commission brought up of actually printing on the plat for each lot, the amount of secondary water that each lot would have, and each lot would be metered, and we are going to do that. So I hope that, I don't know if you have any further questions for me.
Commissioners?
Yeah, I've got one for Mr. Blanch, if I could. So this discussion, as far as the pond being counted as open space or not being counted as open space, do you have a preference, one way or the other?
Well, the preference is, is to include it as open space. This design has 80 lots approved. Four of, there are also four lots that are accessory dwelling units. So essentially, we would be losing probably, I'm guessing, one, maybe two accessory dwelling units. I don't have a strong opinion. We, the planning commission, I think when we met with them, was uncertain whether or not the pond had to be fenced. And so in reading the ordinance after the meeting, there is a requirement that it be fenced five feet high. They also made a requirement to landscape the pond, which I'm not thrilled about that, but I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
I've got a couple of questions now that your statement just has brought up, Mr. Blanch. One is, you know, in the things, in the last two and a half years, as presentations have been made, everything that I've seen shows with respect to a responsible developer. My concern before your presentation was, is how is this pond going to look? Will it be fenced? Will it be, will, heaven forbid, someone should have, get in there and some unfortunate circumstance have happened. So that was a concern. The drawings that I've seen up until right now, which admittedly have been quite a long time since I've really got into the detail of this, shows that it looks very much like a subdivision with appropriate, the appropriate approved lot sizes, a lot of other places. And I don't, I don't see in other areas, and maybe it's just my lack, admittedly, my lack of experience, but any kind of a water source, a secondary water source that's fed by a pond. I like underground, I like underground services, be it water, be it sewer, be it power, be it gas, so that those areas can be what I feel is more beautified. So I would also like, I'd like, I'd like to know what's in the code that requires the developer to maintain whatever area around the water source to protect not only the water source, but also the beautification of the subdivision, because it is going to be, I know that out there, there's been, you're wanting to do lesser than what's on the current master plan. And not, without no respect to that, I know what's been approved and everything else. But I'd also like there to be some pride of ownership out there, around there. So that includes ongoing, not just the people who have the half acre, third acre, whatever size the lot is, but also the ground across for them. So could you address that? And then, Mr. Burton, I'd like to hear your responses, what's required on that.
Yeah, Commissioner Harvey, those are great concerns. If you're not already aware, I actually live there.
Well, now, I don't want to make this part of the public, public thing. I'd like to visit with you about this there. Is that your primary residence?
No, it's a separate residence that we have that's there. That barn that's there ultimately will become part of the community center.
Okay.
So if you think about this particular project, it's 60 acres. The open space is approximately 30 acres of that. Most of the open space is contained on the west side of the project. So where the secondary water pond will be located is on what's called the agricultural open space.
I've seen that map. I have seen that.
Yeah, so it'll be permanently placed there. There is a lot of wildlife that still is in that area. We get a lot of ducks and other animals that come in and out. And so it's important that the secondary water pond fit into the landscape that's there to be able to continue to attract that kind of thing. So we're going to make it so that it's not an eyesore and that it's permanently used in an appropriate way. Secondarily, I would say, and the question is valid, and everybody asked this question, I understand it, how are you going to make sure that this pond is viable, ongoing? All of the open space, whether it's this project or the other project, is going to be owned by a nonprofit that's already been set up in the state called Terraki Farms Inc., Incorporated Nonprofit. That nonprofit will own all of the open space. So I won't personally own it, although I'll be on the board. It will also own all of the Hooper irrigation water shares and the surface water rights that we have off of the Weber River. And so when you think about when somebody applies for a building permit, in this particular development, they'll also pay a secondary water impact fee at time of closing. That will go into a fiduciary account that will be used for long-term, ongoing maintenance and service of the secondary water pond and system. It will be this nonprofit that actually, there'll be annual dues, just like you'd pay in any secondary water system, whether that's 300, 400, or $500 per year for the ongoing maintenance and service as well. So it's a, it's, the nonprofit isn't just gonna own the water, it owns the large amounts of open space as well.
If I may, Mr. Chair, you said you used the word dues. Do you mean fee?
Fees would be a better word, yeah.
Oh, well, I just, I'm trying to use the word that Utah, I know that legally, that's the word.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Fee is a requirement, dues is voluntary. And I'm concerned, and while I understand that you may have some personal interest involved in this today, I'm looking, in my decision-making today, it's to the grandchildren of your grandchildren how this will be managed. So that's where, and you addressed some of those. Thank you.
I would voluntarily say, and I think you said it before, the area is going to develop, right? I don't think that, while we'll be able in our planning to maintain that water pond into perpetuity.
Perpetuity.
Yeah. I believe that at some point in some time, there'll be a secondary water provider there that then we would allow them to take over ownership and go from there.
Thank you. Steve, do you know what, do you remember the question that I had for you?
I do.
Thank you.
So with open space, with subdivisions, PRUDs and clusters that have open space, we require an open space maintenance plan. And from my understanding, we have one for this development, an open space maintenance plan. We would just need to see this pond being addressed in that as well, how that's going to be maintained. But, but that, the idea behind granting certain amounts of bonus density, we do want to make sure that the open space does look good and that the amenities are provided for. And so that's all part of the open space maintenance plan that we require.
I carry very much that this area, there's pride of ownership in that area. And that just helps on our code compliance, everything else down the road. So that's a cost factor to citizens. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Steve, I do have a question. When I used to be on the planning commission around waterways, we required six-foot fences. Five foot's all that's required here, huh?
So as far as the pond goes, there is not anything in the land use code that says that a fence is actually required. We do for, I think, open ditches, we require a fence. But a pond, I believe that would be up to our engineering division to look into their standards to see if that would require some kind of offense.
Very good. Well, I'd recommend we look at that for the future.
Very much. That's, I'd like that, too.
Yeah. All right. Well, we've had, is there anybody else who come to testify to this? Seen none?
Commissioners, I'm open for Commissioner Forre.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
If you're ready.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve the request to amend the conditional use permit, the Terraki Village, but that the original recommendation by staff, which would include the pond as open space, be part of this conditional use permit. And I'd like to speak to that if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
So there's been a lot of discussion on this pond. Obviously, I have some experience with ponds and irrigation system in the past. I see no problem with a properly operating irrigation system run out of a pond. I've done it for the last 40 or 50 years in Ogden Valley. It's a matter of using the right equipment, making sure that adequate pipe size and everything else is, is put in place on the initial infrastructure. I'm leaving it up to the developer. Obviously, it's in the developer's best interest to make sure that the amenity of that pond, including how it looks, will have a direct impact on his development. So I'm not sure that we need to over-regulate that particular portion of it. He's in a fine value in making sure that that pond is recognized by the buyers in that subdivision as being acceptable. If not, it's gonna hurt him in his pocketbook. So I think a lot of times, Mr. Chair, that we can tend to over-regulate, private developers do that for a reason, which is to make money. And they do that by providing the best product. And I think we need to allow Mr. Blanch to provide that best product he can to the consumers in Weber County. So that's my motion.
Very good. I have a motion.
I'll make a second with a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Harvey.
I, a second with the, so while I respect very much Commissioner Forre's position on that, I think you're spot on with regards to the front side and when the lots in that area are trying to sell. My concern is, after all the lots have sold and the houses are built in 20 and 30 and 50 years down the road, that there's a revenue source that will be required in at least some form or some, or until a secondary water company is out there. And maybe they end up dohooking into Hooper. But there's a secondary water hooked in more permanently, that that water source or area still stays beautified and doesn't become full of fragmity and everything else, and, which is prevalent in the area. So I make, I absolutely agree with what you said. My concern has to do with 10, 15, 20 years past the build out of the area.
That's a good point.
So I'd like, if there's something in that, as it relates to that, I just want to make sure that there's at least a level of pride of ownership around that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I really don't have anything to say at that. I'm speechless. Very good. We'll call it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate you bringing it up and Mr. Blanch for coming in. Second item on our agenda today is approval for a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County to support the initiation of pending legislation related to outdoor storage and storage units in unincorporated Weber County.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You don't look like Charlie Ewart.
No, he's got more hair.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning.
Rick Grover.
Right now, we've been working on storage unit ordinance in our land use code so that we have some better regulations on how to handle them, where they should be located. And what we have before you is a resolution looking at the ability for us to buy a little bit more time to get this ordinance writ, written. So what this does is that basically we'll not allow applications to come in until we actually get that taken care of. It should be finished probably within the next couple of months, but we just want to make sure that we get the right ordinance in place to address those issues.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioners, any questions, Rick?
No, I support this. I think it's a great idea to just put this on pause for a little bit until we do have an ordinance that makes sense.
All right. I can live with that, too.
About a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, excuse me, it's a resolution.
Resolution.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Number 51.
Number, it was a resolution, 51, thank you, for the initiation of pending legislation related to outdoor storage and storage units in unincorporated Weber County.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Whoops, that's right, thanks, Fatima.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Faur.
Aye.
Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Very good. Item G3, is request for a resolution of the Weber County Commission of Weber County confirming the appointment of Clint Thurgood to the Board of Directors of Weber Human Services. Mr. Matt Wilson.
Hello, Commissioners, I don't know if you recall this, it's been a few months since it was last in front of you. The process requires the initial appointment to happen here in Weber County and then go to Morgan County and confirm it there. And now it's back just to confirm it and move it forward, so.
Commissioner Harvey. If you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion. This is resolution 52, appointing Clint Thurgood to the Board of Directors of the Weber Human Services. I think this replaces Liz on that board, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Commissioner Faur.
Aye.
Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to action, item number four, request for approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending the Weber County Fee Ordinance as it relates to record request fees for Weber County Attorney and user fees for the Weber County Sports Shooting Complex. Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Commissioners. Before you is our two separate modifications to the Fee Ordinance. The first one is for the county attorney's office related to records requests and the amounts that we charge individuals for copies. We made a minor, we are requesting a minor modification to include digital, the previous ordinance just covered physical copies, so this would just cover digital copies. And then, the other item relates to the Weber County Sports Shooting Complex codifying the fees that they charge out there. And Mr. Todd Ferrario is here, if you would like to ask him any questions regarding that.
Commissioners, any questions?
Nope, I'm ready for a mo, make a motion if you're ready.
I'm ready.
I'd move to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending the Weber County fees as it relates to record requests by the county attorneys and also for the user fees for the Weber County Sports Shooting Complex.
Second with a comment.
Yes.
Permission comment? Commissioners and this body, I want to publicly compliment Todd Ferrario in the way that that shooting complex is being run. It's only been recent that we've been proactive, not reactive, but Todd saw the need of classrooms. Hold on. Tim, I want to get your attention here, this is important. Nice to have you here, that's Tim Van Der Nak with the Standard. But I want to make sure that you understand that Ogden City Schools surplus a couple of classrooms, those mobile classrooms, they surplus them, so we took possession of those. Todd took those two classrooms on his own, and they set them out at the sports shooting complex so that youth could then be schooled on hunter safety and different items. We didn't have to do this. This wasn't in our plan, but we saw a need and filled that need with that. There's also some additional things that they've done out there, including adding an old aluminum boat in an area where youth could go out and actually get in and out of a boat in a controlled, safe environment so they could practice when they were doing it in real life, when they would go out and hunt and ducks and things like that. I know the state Division of Wildlife Resources and the DNR have both been very complimentary in how we've managed our shooting complex, so much now that there are national, it receives national accolades and recognition on how well that's being run. And I wanted to just compliment you, Todd, and a fantastic job out there since it's been under your direction at the first of the year, and publicly thank you for the work you're doing there. Thank you, Commissioner.
And you seconded that, right?
I did.
Very good, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None, no opposition, so that's unanimous. Thank you, Todd, for what you do. Item five, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Post Brothers LLC for lease of a commercial building for property management stores. Bryce Taylor.
Yeah, this is a agreement for a one-year lease of a building out in Marriott Sladeville. We, has about an 800 square foot office area and a maintenance area in the back, and then has a yard that we store our maintenance equipment and trailers and our lifts and that kind of, that equipment out there.
So we've been through this building, we've been trying to kill that lease on, but we've not been able to do it, have we?
No.
Yep.
Not yet. All right, this is annually.
Yes, this is, we've just basically been doing one-year leases on this until we, yeah, figure out where we're.
Questions, Commissioners?
No, I've actually looked at the lease, it appears to be in order on a cost-per-square-foot basis, and so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Obviously, we need this space for storage, don't have, we don't have an alternative location as of yet, so.
It's, it's so great, Mr. Chair, that we've got somebody that's so, we've got a doctorate in looking at leases and knows that stuff. Thank you, Commissioner. With that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
You too.
I make a motion that we approve the contract binding between Weber County and Post Brothers LLC for the commercial building for property management.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, thanks, Tyler, or Bryce, I said Tyler. Item G6, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Horrick Engineering to evaluate the Wildwood Bridge. Brayden Felix, you're the guy that gets, present this, huh?
I am.
Go ahead.
So, the Wildwood Bridge is under, this repair and does need some work done. In order to know what sort of work needs to be done to have a safe bridge, we're going to hire an expert, a bridge engineer, to come have a look at it, evaluate, and give us a report on what improvements need to happen.
You know, I wasn't too crazy about this, but it's only a couple of thousand dollars and it's like, kind of covers us.
I guess, can I ask a question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, are we 100% convinced that this is a county bridge? I've been told by a couple of people that this never was accepted or taken into inventory, if you would, on Weber County's requirement that this is our bridge. It's always been a private bridge. My years driving up the canyon over the past number of years, I always thought it was a private bridge, so can you, I see Sean at the microphone, can you either correct me or validate, I just, I want to make sure before we spend money, this is in fact a county asset.
Sure. Commissioners, it's a little bit, it's an interesting situation, we'll put it that way. Back in the 1970s, the Wildwood subdivision was created. At that time, the roads are private within the subdivision, and they were dedicated as such. But in the minutes of approval from that meeting, the county commission agreed to maintain the bridge, whatever that means. We don't have any other detail other than the county commission agreeing to do that. So with that, we've talked to Commissioner Jenkins, and, and we've, we've kind of outlined the process that we feel is appropriate, which would be that we would conduct this study, find out exactly what needs to be done. The county would go in on a one-time basis, bring the bridge up to the standards that UDOT is requiring right now, and then we are out. And, and we have fulfilled our maintenance requirement, and the citizens take it over at that point, and it becomes a private asset. So that is, that's where we're at right now.
So, Commissioner, let me defend myself here a little. It is in the minutes, plains the nose on your face, that they agreed to maintain the bridge. And I don't know why they would have done that, we weren't privy to the discussions at the time. I wish Uncle Bruce was here so I could talk to him about it, because his name's on those minutes. But he's not here, and I didn't know what else to do. I felt like we had a legal responsibility, but once. Doesn't say how many times you have to maintain it, and I, I'm of the opinion we should do it one time, bring it up to grade, and be done with it. One and done.
So where is it written, the one time?
In the minutes of that meeting.
So we're just, we.
Oh, one time, it doesn't say one time.
So, you know, I, I think in fairness that that ought to be recorded because we're obviously going off of something from a commission meeting in the 70s or 50 years ago, or 49, you know, whatever. So, we ought to make sure that in the minutes of this one, or however it's written down, that we say once.
Well, and I would say that we need more than just minutes, and I would like Mr. Crockett's perspective on legality of minutes.
Good.
You know, at least from my background, minutes may indicate a direction but don't necessarily have the same resolve as a contract. So, I guess what I would say is that I, Mr. Chair, I'm going to support that.
Sure.
Based on those minutes, but I would like something, contractual agreement with the owners that they sign off on prior to accepting the maintenance contract, that they understand that after that maintenance work's done, this is their asset, not ours.
I, that's where I was headed, thank you. Great.
So, but, Mr. Crockett, I'd still like your opinion, if you wouldn't mind, on the legality or the binding nature of minutes versus a contractual arrangement.
So I know that several attorneys in our office have given opinions on this, and so I would have to, with respect to them, share their opinion as well, but I'd have to refresh my memory on that. But my initial reaction to that is there's no legal obligation under minutes from the 70s, given the amount of time, a lack of consideration, I just don't see it as a legal obligation to have to do that.
And I would prob, and I would probably view that the same way for my analysis, but there may be other reasons that, and I would agree with the Chair, that we should probably do this and then have it done with.
Right. Very good. Well, so this is a study to see exactly what we have to do, and it's not very complicated, and it's only a couple thousand dollars. So, to that, does anybody want to make a motion?
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion. Also move on item G6.
I'll second that.
Very good, we have a motion and a second on G6, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go, Brayden. Item G7, request for approval of contract binding between Weber County State of Parsons, for the reconstruction of West 12th Street from the Weber River Bridge to approximately 7140 West. Here you are.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jared Anderson.
Jared Anderson, go ahead, Jared.
Upgrade or downgrade, depending on who you ask. We're super excited for this project. It has been a long time in waiting, there's been a lot of processes that have taken place to get these monies in place and ready for us to get this contract available. I don't know if you have any questions, just a quick download of this, this will include reconstruction of 12th Street as it says that you read, out to approximately 7100 West. It also includes some upgrades to Weber Basin Waterline. Their portion of those upgrades, Weber Basin Waterline, will reimburse to the county. But those are the two main items that'll be taking place. This is a widening, full reconstruct and a little bit widening of that pavement. It'll make it, as you can see on the first phase, if you've driven out there recently, much safer road to drive on.
What is the price of that contract?
I've got that in front of me, 10.5 million.
Very good. All right, Commissioners, any questions?
One, please, Mr. Chair. Just making sure that we went through the legal procurement process through our repurchasing department.
Yes, we have, we've, we ran that through our procurement process.
Thank you.
Ready for motion?
I am.
I would move to approve the contract between Weber County and State of Parsons for the reconstruction of 12th Street from the Weber River Bridge to approximately 7140 West.
Second.
Very good, we have motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No dissenting, so that's the unanimous vote. So Jared, I understand this will start immediately?
As soon as possible, yes.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Sorry, when do you anticipate it starting?
We have got, we've got all the contract documents together, obviously, from the contractor now, so once this is signed, we've got to have what's called a pre-construction meeting, make sure everything's in place. So within, I would say within two weeks, I really think the contractor'd start mobilization.
So you're thinking that this will be underway beginning or around the 10th of September?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next item eight is request for approval for a memorandum of understanding between Weber County and Ogden City for determination and distribution of anticipated grant funds. Brandon Roundy. Chief Roundy, good to have you here.
Morning, Commissioners.
Hello, Chief.
Today I'm presenting you a memorandum between Ogden City and Weber County. It's for the purpose of distribution of the funds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. This grant was applied through Ogden City Police Department, and as a participant of this grant, the Weber County Sheriff's Office is due to receive an estimated of 10% of the award in this grant specific towards the purchase of law enforcement enhancement services. We have participated in grants with Ogden City prior to this, last year, and it should be completed by the end of this year. We're doing a safe exchange zone at the Weber County Sheriff's Office, and we've also used it to purchase taser equipment. This year's award, we anticipate to be estimated around $5,600, so we're going to apply that towards the purchase of ballistic shields for our patrol crews with a goal of having one shield per crew on duty, so they'll have access to that while they're performing law enforcement for each crew that's on. Couple notes on this grant is it does not preclude us from getting future JAG grants that we, they're still available to us as long as we qualify for those. The term of this memorandum of understanding is four years, and it's backdated to October 1st, and that's because we could actually apply these funds to purchases that we've already made within the past year, but we don't intend to do that. And it could be amended and changed and modified just by going through the regular legal proceedings. And that's pretty much everything I have. Do you have any questions for me, Commissioners?
Commissioners, any questions?
Go.
Don't.
I'm ready for a motion.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the MOU or the memorandum of understanding between Weber County and Ogden City for the distribution for anticipated grant funds.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved.
All right, thank you.
Chief Roundy, you bet. Item number nine, request for consideration of an action on an application for final approval of Shepherd Estate subdivision consisting of four lots. Steve Burton again.
Hey, again. We've got a four-lot subdivision called Shepherd Estates. This is just a final step, is getting the commission approval and then also signing the improvement agreement. In this case, the developer has already installed the roads, and so what we're accepting is 10% of what that cost, what that cost was. So, the improvement agreement is in the amount of $22,203.39. And then, final subdivision plat is what you'd be signing, that's gone through the planning commission and receive their approval, and this is just the final step.
Questions, Commissioners?
No.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. All right, item 10, request for consideration, an action item on a request for approval of a subdivision improvement agreement for the overlook subdivision, phase one and two.
Yes, Commissioners, this subdivision was before you last month of the final approval, and, and we're just getting now to the phase where they, the developers put up the funds. And so this is an improvements guarantee agreement so that we can ensure proper installation of the improvements in this area. So for, this is the improvement agreement for overlook phases one and two, and it is in the amount of $2,9,482.13, which has been given, which we have currently, the developer has given those funds to the county as of today. And so this, similar to the last application, this is the final step in the process.
Question, Commissioners?
I do.
Yes. Commissioner Harvey.
My only question as it relates to this subdivision and others that have been previously approved, I know and I'll just personally, I'm approved, I know and I'll just personally, I'm concerned about the setbacks and snow removal. Now, I believe overlook is not part of the, and I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, but I believe overlook one and two doesn't fall within the county road, but the private road. Can I have the petitioner just verify that, Mr. Chair? They're here?
They are here. Would either of you care to speak up?
Oh, good, it's Don.
You had a 50-50 shot at getting the right one.
What's your name?
Don Guera. Yes, it is, it is private roads. Everything from Summit Pass up is all private roads.
I just wanted to, I was like, I think, I thought, hey, I don't need to worry about that one. I worry about ours, but you guys are, you know, you, you know what you're, you're doing up there, so.
Understood.
Very good. Thank you.
That answers my questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Don.
All right, we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to approve, item G10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. Very good. Kind of a quick meeting today, but we got a lot done. Well, Commissioners, either of you care to comment today at the close of the meeting?
May I just for a moment?
Yes, please, Commissioner Harvey.
I want to compliment the original Commissioners. I know Commissioner Bischoff, Commissioner Dearden, and I think Commissioner Kane, who started the Weber County Golf Tournament. This, since the implementation of the tournament 17 years ago, because of that, we as Commissioners have been able to give back to the local nonprofits over 250, in fact, it's approaching $300,000 back into our local charities, which I think is, is a great, great step. Better than doing nothing, so we, I think it's wonderful.
That is true. That's a pain to me. I, I could do with that pretty easy, but I know there's a lot of people like to do